And to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, budget review. Turn it over to Spencer or Ron.
I just want to start off by thanking everybody for coming out on Saturday to do this. I know we tried this last year for the first time and I think it went reasonably well, so we thought we'd try another one this year. And I wanted to thank Spencer. I don't know if people realize how much time he's been putting into this process. I know I got here early and I was looking at his time clock punches and he's put a tremendous amount of time, as well as his staff, and apparently his family, too.
Yeah.
So I just wanted to say thank you to him and I'm going to turn it over to him at this point to lead the discussion.
All right, as in past, as we did last year, probably start off with putting the items into the budget binder. I know some people have already done it, but we'll, for those that have not, we'll walk through briefly the items that we're putting in. So the ones that, the blue and yellow sheet, the fun summary sheet, the ones that have the binder clip on are the ones that go in the binder. And they have, again like last year, they have a sticky note that indicates which section. So the first one goes in right under the first pink sheet, the summary and overview. You can remove the old sheets and put in the new sheets, say one. Yep, yep. It's paper clipped together, goes in right together in the binder.
He always gives us a little crumpling.
Yep, throw the old ones away or recycle them. The next one is under tab 10, and it's easy, it just goes right behind the blue paper in tab 10. Paper clip, stick that one in. Tab 11 and then tab 13. So it's, they just go right, right in there. Tabs 10, 11, and 13 don't have to replace anything. 11, 12, and 13 don't need to replace anything. All right, so you'll also see in front of you, there's another, I guess the next installment of the Budget Reconciliation Report from FIRE. You can just put that with the other Budget Reconciliation Reports. And then there's another, just paper clipped item that we'll talk about a little bit later as we get a little further in the budget process. Set that to the side for right now. Right. We're all done with the, juggling the papers. The first thing we wanted to do was to kind of go through and see if there's any questions that you had from any of the parts of the general fund or any of the departments we covered last time, any budget reconciliation questions or anything like that. We wanted to start off with any questions you may have for IT because Glenn is leaving here as soon as he can and heading right to the airport to get on a flight. And then he'll be getting back right about the time we're probably ending our next budget workshop. So if there's any questions regarding information technology for Glenn, now would be a great time to ask them.
These new, without going through the budget again, these new tablets that are ordered, are they on this last one or the upcoming budget?
They're in the existing budget, and if we have to, we'll carry over to the next budget.
Okay, that's what I was thinking, but I want to make sure.
Yeah.
Okay. Are these new ones, is there going to be any problems since you're having trouble getting in them and you're looking at other means, are they different in price or?
Pricing's about the same. If we have to go with a replacement, they're just not as quick of a processor. So that's why we're probably going to try to hold off. I mean, we got word back from, we, we found Office Depot said they had stock on them, so we were able to order, it was a maximum order of two per customer number. So we ordered two from Office Depot Thursday, I think it was. So those are supposed to be delivered on Tuesday, so at least allows us to start to prep an image on them if they show up on Tuesday. CDW told us the same thing, and then the stock didn't come in as they were promised. The update from CDW is that we are number 15 on the list in the line to receive the tablets from them. So they are getting them in, they're not coming in in large quantity, so they're filling orders in the order as they were placed, so.
The ones from Office Depot, are they the same price that you were getting?
I think they're $20 difference, they're $20 cheaper.
Oh.
Office Depot's the premier distributor for them, but there's a quantity limit on them through Office Depot, but...
Okay.
They're very popular because they're the best shipping tablet right now out there, so, for the Android.
Right. Thank you. Have a good trip.
Thanks, no other questions?
Other department heads should think about doing that. Take a trip right after.
It wasn't that way with the original schedule and then... Okay, thank you. If you do think of anything, I could answer questions directly if you want, just send them to Ron, and I could send back any answers to him while I'm gone.
Thanks.
Thanks, Glenn. Drive safely.
Okay, any other follow-up questions from, from our last meeting? For me, the items that we covered previously, any general fund questions before we move on to the next stuff?
Did we talk about convention and tourism section?
We have not. We're probably going to be talking about that on the next meeting. Based on the schedule of our facilities manager, that's the best time to schedule it, so.
So that'll be next Thursday?
That'll be on Thursday, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, nothing else so far? All right, we can move to the very quick and exciting funds. So turning to tab nine, start with the Employee Benefit Sick Time Fund. So Employee Benefit Sick Time Fund, this is the fund which we use pretty much just to cover our liabilities that we have, so we can report our liabilities for the sick time payouts that employees accrue for when they leave. There's very little budget activity because it all happens on the balance sheet, so it's the assets and liabilities. So basically, we expect to get really little bit in interest. All right, the next sheet is the Downtown Parking Fund. This is a fund that was established to cover receipts for revenues for parking, employee parking permits in the downtown business district, as well as parking citation fines in the downtown business district. They all go into this fund to be used to provide parking items in there. And we haven't, we've never had any expenses in this fund so far. We've just kind of been accumulating money and we're looking to continue accumulating that. We're looking, we're estimating about $1,900 there. All right, Emergency Reserve, again, another one where there's not a lot of activity. This, this past year, you'll see that we've budgeted to put in some money from the general fund. We have, we're going to make that transfer, so it'll be increasing our reserves funds this year. In the upcoming budget, there's no plans to take any money out of reserves, no plans to put any money in the reserves unless we're instructed by the board to do so. But right now, we're just looking at maintaining and continuing to keep the Emergency Reserve Fund there. All right, any questions so far? All right, moving on to the Vehicle Replacement Program. Vehicle Replacement Program, as you know, is a forward funded program where we receive money and we've chosen to fund this primarily through our supplemental sales tax. And we put the money aside so that we're able to purchase the vehicles as they come due, so that we don't have to deal with, don't have to pay any of the interest costs for, you know, doing a lease. We did some leases initially and we're paying off that debt. You will see in here that we've got, listed in here under debt principal, $153,000 to pay off our five-year lease. This is the last payment of our five-year lease. We, in contact with Fifth Third, which is the entity we used for that lease, we found we still had a little bit of money left over in our escrow account this year. So they, when we initially did the lease, they put some money aside for us to use to fund vehicles. We had purchased some of the vehicles out of our own, from our own bank accounts rather than the lease account. So they gave us back that money from the lease account, which we can then use to pay off this, and then we should be done with our five-year lease. We'll continue to have our 10-year lease for another five years, but the first piece of our lease payments will be done. The second sheet in here shows pie chart, you can see the different vehicles that are going to be purchased for the different, the different costs. You can see we're doing some for public works, some for police, and a little bit for fire. The sheet we just looked at initially, I apologize for jumping back and forth, the sheet we just looked at initially gives the breakdown of the different, the different pieces. So you can see specifically, we're looking at purchasing one vehicle for investigations, five patrol cars with changeovers for the squads, a fire pickup, and then the trucks are listed there for public works. The next page after the pie chart shows our revenues coming in. You can see we have allocated about $915,000 for coming in from the supplemental sales tax. And the way that we get the number is if you look at the next couple of sheets, they're the blue sheets, they say frontline vehicles. If you look down at the bottom of the page that says frontline vehicles, you'll see at the very bottom, we, under the annual column at the far right, it gives a total for, you know, we project out the cost of what the vehicle will be and see how much we need to set aside annually. We add in the five police cars which we replace each year, comes to a total funding amount of $908,000. And so to be conservative, we rounded it up to $915,000. And that's how much we're looking at pulling from supplemental sales to put in this forward funded program. Last year of the budget, it was determined to do a moratorium, and so what we're looking at this year is to, you know, begin purchasing vehicles again, but we're only looking at doing five squad cars each year to continue the amount that we had done in previous years rather than jumping and doing 10 this year. Any questions on the Vehicle Replacement Program? Okay, before we get into the next couple of funds, which are some of our capital funds, I wanted to call your attention to the sheet of paper that was in front of you, it was paper clipped together. It says bond considerations. As, as the board knows, staff has begun looking at the possibility of, you know, of implementing a bond and kind of looking at what options are out there. We talked with some consultants and got some initial information, which is kind of presented here. To be, the first thing is to be bank qualified, we're looking at no more than $10 million per calendar year. And then the annual cost would be $750,000. Or so, apparently it looks like in the text it says no more than $10,000, that should be $10 million. We can get a bond for more than $10,000, be $10 million. So the annual cost for a $10 million bond is $750,000. And we'd have to figure out how we wanted to proceed with that, what method we wanted to do for it, and then also which type of bond we'd be interested in, you know, what sort of projects we'd want to do with that bond. The sheet that's right behind it is a sheet that was prepared by our Public Works Department, and here they've, you can see several different columns where they go through different types of public infrastructure projects that could be done. The, the first column, maintenance, you'll see there's nothing on the first page, it all appears on the second page, and that would be the resurfacing project. So we've got about $9 million worth of resurfacing that we could do to cover about three-eighths of the village, so almost half of the village, with about $9 million worth of resurfacing work. I know the board had kind of indicated interest in resurfacing work and trying to find a way to make a concerted effort to accomplish a lot in that direction. Other options for the types of bond we could do would be road reconstructions, and you can see we've got about $7 million worth of projects identified there. There would be a possibility of stormwater improvements, there are several of those that have been identified, we could look at a bond for that. To fund that bond, we may want to look at things, you know, under, on the bond consideration sheet, you'll see at the very bottom, we've got the, some other bond options to consider, like we may want to consider stormwater utility, stormwater referendum, you know, referendum to see if we wanted to do a stormwater bond. There's lots of different options. There, the next column is the other public improvements, which are just, you know, some miscellaneous things that aren't really road reconstructions, kind of additional projects, other infrastructure improvements that we could do. And then the final column is for TIF projects, which is something we could look at in the future. And once we, if we begin receiving a TIF increment, then we could look at the possibility of doing a bond with that. So there's, there's lots of different things that we could consider. As, and as we look at trying to fund it, basically what happens when you issue a bond is officially a property tax is levied, and then the village has the opportunity to abate the tax. So they could say, we've identified this other $750,000 worth of money that we're going to use to cover this. So while technically there's a property tax, each year we would abate it and say, don't charge the property tax on this, we're funding it with these other sources. So that would be an option. If the village wanted to consider doing that, they could have a property tax and fund it with some other sources. Or they could simply choose to fund it through property tax. I mean, it's, it's open, we could do a variety of different options there. We wanted to identify some potential sources if the board was interested in finding the $750,000 somewhere besides property taxes, so we'd be able to abate them. Under options to fund $750,000, we've listed a few different things. The capital budget as it stands right now, in new revenue, so excluding carryover items, in the new revenues versus new expenses, we've got about $88,000 worth of a, of a surplus under the utility tax alone. We've got another $288,000, which we've talked about transferring from our locomotor fuel tax into the capital projects fund. We could certainly use that, although, you know, the downside is then we wouldn't have the opportunity to use that to fund anything in the general fund if that was the board's desire, you know, we'd have, we'd use it one place or the other. And additionally, there could be home rule issues with the locomotor fuel tax. We could use the motor, motor fuel tax, the state motor fuel tax fund itself, as long as the projects that we're doing are of, the type of project that would be able to be funded by that. So we couldn't do a stormwater infrastructure project with it. We could do some of the other public improvements, but we could probably look at some road reconstructions. Depending on the road reconstruction, we could look at resurfacing definitely with using some of our motor fuel tax. In the budget that's in your binder that's presented right now, we've got $500,000 dedicated in that budget currently to our 2013 road resurfacing. So we could use that money, obviously if we're doing $9 million worth of road resurfacing, we don't need to do the extra $500,000. We could use some of that money. The, the problem with that going forward is we only get about $700,000 a year into the motor fuel tax fund. So if we're making the decision that we're going to be using that to fund this bond, then we would get the $9 million worth of road resurfacing done right now, but we'd be limited as to what future projects we could do after those initial ones have been done. So that's something to consider. Another option would be to consider the fact that we've got several debt payments that will be coming, that will be done paying in a few years. In, beginning in 2018, we will have stopped, we will have just finished our $350,000 a year payment for our 9.5 acres. And then the next year, we will have just stopped our 10-year vehicle replacement lease, which would generate another $120,000. So one option would be to say, you know, we have some money currently in the Vehicle Replacement Program, and assuming the revenue stream continues, then one option would be to say, we can take, for the initial few years, we can take some money out of the Vehicle Replacement Program, use it to pay for this bond, and then when we stop making the debt payments on these other items, start using that money to cover the bond and then also to begin repaying back the Vehicle Replacement Program. That's another possibility that we could consider. And then there's always the, the opportunity to, you know, the other things that we could consider. I don't know that it's, you know, a recommendation that we do that, but there's other forms of taxes that we could consider imposing. You know, we could do it through the property tax like we talked about, we could do an increase to the locomotor fuel tax, do an increase to the sales tax. I don't think that's necessarily the direction that, you know, we want to go, but those are options that we could consider for doing the bond.
We assume that because, you know, our argument all along has been we're not going to abuse the home rule status. The only way we've used the property tax is to help with the pension funds. But those are options and we want to make sure we identify those. Alan Spencer, can I?
Yeah.
Give a little more background from what our consultants told us as far as our bond rating?
Yeah, yep.
You know, we're in this situation where we haven't issued bonds, so we don't have a bond rating. So our consultants, Ilers and Paul has gone through, looked at our finances, and they've looked at all of our neighboring communities that have all done this, and they all have bond ratings. And that includes Oak Brook, Hinsdale, Claret Hills, Willowbrook, Darien, Downers Grove. They project that we would probably be able to qualify for a double A bond rating, which is pretty good, based on our finances. Oak Brook's got a double A, and there's different classes within the, you know, Oak Brook's got a double A two, Hinsdale's got a double A one, Claret Hills has just got a single A one. Willowbrook's got a double A three, and they know that there's a possible downgrade this year. Darien's got a double A three. Downers Grove is a double A three with another possible downgrade. Doesn't mean it's going to happen, but it could. Then, of course, our school district 201 is a double A two, district 60 is a double A two. 99 has bought bond insurance, so they have no rating that we're aware of at this point. So this is part of the meetings that we've had with them, just to give you some sense of where we think we could end up if we decide to do this. And the process will take approximately 45 days if we decided to go forward.
Wow, fast.
It can be done fairly quickly. The project's underway.
What to think about now?
Sorry.
We've never issued bonds and it's like, I know we need road resurfacing and some upgrades and all that, but I always had envisioned the only time we'd issue bonds is if we were in dire straits, you know, or we, you know, like...
That's not typically the use of bonds. I mean, a lot of the communities around us, as you can see from the examples, use it to leverage their cash flow to do sizable capital projects.
Right.
And I know that's not been the philosophy of the village, but in order to do some of the things we'd like to do, we don't really see a whole lot of other options available to us.
I mean, I would, I would be more in favor of bonds than a tax increase. I mean...
Absolutely.
There's just no way. I mean, I don't want my taxes to go up, and I sure don't want our residents' taxes to go up. That's just, that's not an option.
I don't think so either. I mean, we already, you know, a couple of years ago increased motor fuel tax, and we did a sales tax, and, you know, we don't want to do power property tax, and we don't want to use the other ones, so I agree with you.
Right, I mean, we've run out of taxes that don't impact our residents, and that's why we did the sales taxes, people that, you know, yes, some of our residents certainly are impacted, but visitors are also impacted, and same with the gasoline, but when you do a property tax, it's, it hits home and it's just, it's not an option.
I'm still going to hearken back to the scenario, we have all this here in front of us, but if we lose our home rule status, what's that going to do to a lot of these numbers?
Nothing for this budget year. Next budget year would impact us.
Well, we lose a lot of options that, you know, we could fall back on, but I think, you know, people need to understand that we don't want to keep home rule status for the ability to raise taxes, we want to keep home rule status for the income we get from the...
Yeah.
From the government for it. So...
It gives us more flexibility on how we're using current funds to fund operations, and if we lose it, you know, next budget year is going to be a very difficult one in terms of how we're going to have to make significant cuts. That, that's the answer, that's, that's what will happen. And we don't want to be disingenuous with the idea of the bond issue. I mean, in order to do it, we would have to levy a tax, but then we would abate it and we'd want to tell people that upfront, so they understand we're not going back on our promise.
Yeah.
But, you know, as everybody knows, we've got, just like everybody else around us, you know, great needs to invest in our infrastructure. And we've all pushed that off in this economic time, and things aren't going to get better if we continue to ignore it.
Well, especially because like Mike Ramsey did that beautiful job doing the whole projected stuff out for all the water department, the meters, the water towers, the piping, all that, and it really gave us the big picture for the next 20 years, so that we don't lose sight of it. So that's helpful, and, you know, we may be sitting on something like, you know, a big sewer issue and certainly the stormwater stuff. I mean, the residents have been...
This doesn't even address that.
I know.
We identified the, the road surfacing because we think, you know, people will really recognize that, that that is a needed.
I still think we'd still need to do chunks of the stormwater stuff. They've all been patient, and we've identified, you know, the, you know, basically raided the areas in order of importance and all that, and, you know, they've been extremely patient, and I don't think we can ignore it. And if we're going to get bond money, I think not only do we need the stuff that people are going to see when they drive down the streets, but I think we should bump it enough to start addressing at least some of the stormwater issues. Because that money's not going to come out of nowhere, and there's going to be no money if we lose home rule status.
One of the ideas we talked about is because the $10 million seems to be kind of a magic number to be able to get those bank qualified bidders on the bonds, is that maybe the board would want to consider a second issue and then look at some way to finance that. You know, one of the mechanisms that Downers Grove apparently just approved, we think, is the stormwater utility. It's not a, it's not something you can do overnight, but if you wanted to say, okay, we'll do the 10 million, we're going to focus on the resurfacing, you know, and then we're going to start to work on that bigger set of projects for the stormwater, and then we could come back with some recommendations. The stormwater utility may be something we want to implement.
Yeah, well, the stormwater referendum may be something we want to talk about, too.
That's another option, too.
Because, you know, home rule's going to be on the ballot in November, and stormwater, we'll also hear from the residents, at least, you know, we hope they'll all get out and And that's a real important issue, too, is to find out if they're willing to say, yeah, we need to, you know, go ahead and implement a tax somewhere, but we need to get the stormwater issue addressed. And then we make it the, the majority to say, you know, too bad, if you bought a house that's underwater, too bad. And it would be unfortunate, but at least we get direction from the residents where to go with it. So I'm kind of thinking on the bonds, I'd like to earmark them, like do a road reconstruction issuance bond, so that we know where it is, that we don't, when people look at our finances or, you know, the residents here is talking about issuing bonds, they'll go, oh, you know, now they tax us, now they're issuing bonds, and it, you know, we run the risk of people not taking the time to look at what we're doing is fiscally sound. If we issue the bonds with a, the use of the bonds in the title, like the, you know, road reconstruction bond, everybody knows what we're doing, right off the bat. Even if they don't go anywhere near the places that are being fixed, they know what we're doing with it. So that's what I'd like to see, is that the bonds issued... So that's what I'd like to see, is that the bonds issue for certain purposes.
We've talked about it before, Ron, where Westmont always didn't do it like every other town.
True.
Because we tried to pay off our bills fast. We're kind of like old Bohemians, and we didn't want to owe anything to anybody, and we just wanted to get it paid off quick, but that also put us in a cash crunch.
Yep.
So unfortunately during these times now, we're going to have to start thinking like-
Like the rest of the world.
Exactly, for this thing to happen.
Yeah. Yeah, and it, I, we did just, you know, we've been trying to look at this from every different angle, and we can't come up with any other way to do it. And we know these projects are important, we know citizens' expectations are that we're going to maintain our infrastructure and-
Well, there's business sense, and this is how it's done in business.
Right.
And we have to start thinking that way, first to continue going into the future to fund these programs and-
And plus, it gets more expensive, it's just like maintaining your house, if you don't maintain it properly-
It's going to get worse.
It gets worse, and it's more expensive to try to fix and replace and all that. So, you know, we're just going to probably just have to take the bull by the horns and say, this is how we're going to have to do it, and we got to do it now, and we're going to issue bonds. And do it.
And truthfully, the way costs are today for having things done, this is the time to do it.
Yeah, yeah, it probably is an opportune time if you look at it that way.
The RFPs are going to come in really competitive.
That was another thing the consultant said, the interest rates now are optimum to be able to do this, and we might miss that opportunity if we wait.
Yeah, there's a lot of, there's a lot of cities and towns that are doing them now for a big dollar.
Yeah.
That are taking care of all this stuff for a number of reasons, so I think it behooves us to say, look how far we've gone without having to issue bonds, but now we actually want to do it because it's fiscally prudent to do so.
With all that said, we just still have to make sure we can afford it.
Yeah, we have to pay for it.
We can make the payments. I mean, it's okay to get the loan, but we got to have that payment all the time to make sure it's there.
Right, and, and kind of to go along with something that trustee Fleming had mentioned, you know, with home rule status, if we do issue these, you know, with home rule status, and then we're able to use some of these home rule, the revenues that we have with home rule to be able to abate them so that it doesn't hit the residents, so that it's, you know, people that are traveling through the town that are paying the gas tax and the sales tax, that there, we're using some of the money that comes from those taxes to finance the, you know, the loan, the bond, then if something does happen to home rule status and those revenues, if we do have issues with those revenues, then the ability to abate it may go away, and that may be a result of, you know, potentially losing home rule status, is that the ability to abate the taxes, you know, with payments from non-residents would go away, and then it could end up, ending up on the property tax rules.
Yeah, realistically, that-
That's a possibility.
Could be an option.
And look at the motor fuel tax, it didn't, you know, everybody screamed about it, but we're not higher than the-
Anyplace else?
No, in terms of gas prices, no. Yeah, they're all higher everywhere.
I know. Yeah, but we're not like, you know-
Unless you go downstate somewhere, where I think I bought, cheapest I found two weeks ago in Champaign was like $402.
Well, whoever thought $402 would be cheap.
Last weekend I was in Ohio, and it was $360.
$360.
No, the, the gas wars were between $360, $364, my God, go back to the $360, it's like, oh my God, we're like a dollar more.
It's very depressing.
So then is the general consensus that we want to try to build into this budget the ability to do some sort of bond issue?
Yeah.
Try to find the $700.
Ideally, we just need to know that we can pay for it.
Yeah.
Right, okay. So, and then we want to try to build it in to be able to have the funds available to be able to abate it.
Yes.
To be able to cover it from-
Absolutely.
You know, from capital funds, from motor fuel tax, possibly using supplemental sales tax to help offset initial payments. So basically, it's similar to the options that are listed here. Okay.
Everybody understands the concept of the abatement. If they don't understand it, then they won't be taxed.
How are we going to get this out to the public to where they're going to understand this thing?
We're going to-
I mean, it's, you know, I mean, we, we've seen what's happened in the past, when we have like town meetings or whatever, things like that.
You take your black, she'll take her black, we'll all take a black.
All take our area.
And talk to as many people as you can.
I don't, I don't know any other, I don't know any other way to do it, because, I mean, they have to understand what is being faced here.
We get some press coverage that is accurate, that would help.
Well, yeah.
You know, seriously.
That's what I was going to say, is rather than wait to see if the press coverage is accurate and, you know, taking soundbites.
Put something in a little trip, do a press release.
We got to get out in front of it.
A newsletter.
Newsletter.
The Bugle's got a place where public officials can sit there and write an article.
Channel 16.
Yep, 16, six.
We can try to leverage every possible communication tool.
You've got to get the word out there.
I guess, I guess one of the questions that I would, I would put up there and say, ask what would happen if you lose home rule?
Yeah, because-
That's the question.
You know, Claret Hills just voted it down because-
Ask the question, what would happen if you lose home rule in the village of Westmont?
You mean ask the residents that?
Ask. Put that out there in one of the press releases, you know, have the residents, ask, what would be the consequences for losing home rule status in the village of Westmont?
I don't want to seem kind of sudden, but you think they'd understand what the consequences-
Yeah, I, I think that's a little strong, I don't think that-
It's up to us to inform them.
In some way, kind of put the question out there to get it in their mind to ask.
But I think that is a little condescending, we don't want to approach it that way.
Well, one of the things then-
The assumption, the assumption that most people still have about home rule status is that it's nothing more than a taxing tool, and we know that's different, and we have the type of board that has used home rule status the way it should be used.
It's complicated.
It's complicated.
We don't even understand it 100%.
But I mean, the thing is-
Truly, I mean, we need to-
You know, it, it has never been abused by this group, never.
No.
In any way, shape, or form, it's done nothing.
And the fear probably is future boards, but you have to hope that you're going to have good people in, you know.
But I mean, the thing is, we, it's done nothing but to improve things for the residents of this village, and to keep, try to keep things there.
Our stress would again be, you know, we want to continue to maintain and improve the quality of life.
Well, the other thing is that the Saturday before the last election, which was on Tuesday, I was in a business in town, and there were a number of people from Claret Hills that frequent that business, and they were talking how they were going to vote down home rule, and everybody knew it because all the board was going to do was tax everybody, and I was like, oh my God, you know? And so they said, well, can you explain to us that, what it is besides taxation? And I'm like, you had to wait till Saturday before the election, man.
Shame on Claret Hills for not getting it out there.
I mean, they really, and you know, they, it was just, you know, and so then all the people in Westmont were sitting there, you know, soaking it in, and I'm thinking, we're going to have to do all kinds of damage control because of the last election where Claret Hills was very vocal about saying, we don't trust our trustees, they say they just want to, you know, tax everything to up the revenues and the coffers, and I'm like-
That always just cracks me up, because don't people realize it impacts us too? They must think we don't live in town or something, you know? We're only getting everybody else.
I don't know, you know, that, I don't know how much of an effort the, the village or how quick, how early on they started to try to educate their residents. I don't know, I didn't see a lot out there.
I don't think they tried to educate.
I don't think they did anything.
It was all, I mean, all the signs I saw were all, no.
Those, they, those people really got on the bandwagon, and, you know, in my mind, we're certainly sadly misinformed, but, you know, and we have our naysayers here, every time you turn around, there's a letter to the progress, say no to home rule in Westmont, you know, stop the tiffs, and it's like, you know, I wish they would find out what they're talking about, but it's, it's, we're really going to have to explain it.
Right.
It's going to be our job to do it.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, next.
My soap on.
All right, so, moving on to capital projects, and this is what we've got in here so far. You'll, you'll see the first page in capital projects is the revenues, we're looking at about 1.2 million in revenues, including the $288,000 transferred in from the general fund, and also, you'll notice payment in lieu of taxes is $321,000, which is the payment from the water fund. In prior years, the water fund has simply paid a flat $200,000 for the past several years, and when we were looking at the ordinance, the, the idea of payment in lieu of taxes is that if the water were a typical utility company, they would be paying a utility tax like any other company, and we're looking at the ordinance, which indicated that, you know, for water distributor companies, it's 5%, and this year with the 5% of their revenues, the gross revenues from the water, and because of the tax increase that we've heard about, we've talked about, you know, the infrastructure piece, as well as the cost from the DuPage Water Commission in Chicago raising water rates, our water revenue estimates are significantly higher this year than they have been the previous year, so we're looking at contributing about 5% of that, because those have increased, we're looking at having the water contribute a little bit more to the capital projects fund, just like they would if they were a typical business. The next couple of sheets are very similar to the ones that we saw last time for the general fund. The red ones are the preliminary cuts, and these are the level one and two cuts, these are the items that were initially requested in the capital projects funds but have been So there were several, you know, some building improvements, some equipment requests that came in, and then when we kind of re-looked at revenues and expenses and kind of looked at it all together, we realized we needed to make some cuts, these were the items that got cut. The, one of the few items that was identified as something we wanted to keep in here, but identify as a possible option for the board to consider was the entrance awning at the streets division, which was about $12,000. The next page that you see in here is a summary of the MSI sheets, and the MSI, the, the sheets that we have in our system are, will follow this, but what I wanted to take a look at and wanted to be able to show the board is, for each of these items that's in the capital projects, we've talked previously about how we have items that are carryovers, and so you don't, especially for the capital funds, you really don't want to look at the revenues you're getting in, in one year compared to the expenses that you're spending in one year, because you have money that you've put aside in the bank, and that's the purpose of a capital projects fund. So what this has done is, I've got the budget amount, and then the carryover amount, and then what's left is what I've just called new, or it's kind of the stuff that's just hitting this coming year. So you can see here, for example, the coming road design engineering, we're budgeting $90,000, but it's $90,000 that was in last year's budget as well, it's $90,000 that we have reserves in the bank, it's part of the cash carryover, so it doesn't necessarily need to count against our current incoming revenues. So going down, you'll see this again, popping up with the police department firearms range replacement, and that was discussed a little bit at the last committee, the whole meeting, but in, in this current year's budget, in fiscal year 12, it was discussed of identifying some money to set aside, so we set aside $25,000 and then said, you know, hopefully that will at least give, you know, help us with the budget amount if something does go wrong, but if not, then we'll set that aside, we've identified it, that we want to carry it over into the 12, the 12, 13 budget, and so we're looking at a total cost of about $55,000 for the range replacement, $25,000 of it is part of that cash carryover that we look at, you know, we've set aside last year, and then we'll actually spend it this year, so we're only looking at about $30,000 of new expenses that we need to make sure are covered by existing revenues. The, a similar thing for the fire headquarters roof repairs, in the capital projects budget this year, we've got $120,000, last year we budgeted about $59,000, last year when we budgeted the $59,000, that was what we anticipated the cost would be, there's been some additional information, some structural analysis that has to be done, which has significantly raised the cost. And so we're now looking at total expenditures of $120,000, but really only $60,000 of it is, is the new, new revenue. So we've got several street improvements that are listed here, we've got finishing off our stream bank stabilization, which is required, we've got some of our stormwater improvements that we have budgeted last year, and, you know, we've accomplished several of those, and there's some of them that we're carrying the money forward into this year to continue to work on those. You can see down there at the very, very bottom that we've got total expenditures right now in the capital projects fund of just over a million, we've got total revenues of 1.2 million, so total, everything altogether, we've got a surplus of $105,000. With just looking at the new pieces, so excluding the carryovers, we've got a surplus of $376,000, which is the money that we mentioned as being available to help go towards funding the bonds. So if we do use that or a portion of that money to fund the bonds, then we're looking at very little ability to kind of do extra capital projects the next several years, you know, we're sort of saying, you know what, for the next several years, all of our extra money, anything, you know, above what we spent this year is kind of designated to funding that bond repayment, and just as long as we're aware that that's the case, that's why we, right now, we have a surplus, and that's what we talked about using in the bonds. Any questions about any of the items in capital projects right now, or anything we've discussed So the next couple of sheets in there are kind of a repeat of the, that first sheet, and then we turn to, to debt schedules, we've got the debt schedules for our general, series 2010 general obligation bonds, which is the payment for the nine and a half acre project. As you can see, we've got right about the annual debt service amount, each year is right about $350,000, and our last one would be paid out on January 1st of 2017, so at the end of the 2017, you know, 2016, 2017 fiscal year, so beginning fiscal year 2018, we'd have that additional $350,000 that we talked about. Right behind that is a similar amortization schedule for our two vehicle leases. You'll see the first one, which was the five-year lease.
Spencer, do you want to point out, though, if we sold the property beforehand, obviously we could pay that off.
Yes, we could pay that off, right, yep. And so then behind that are the vehicle leases, you'll see the five-year, the one at the top, we're on our last payment, we talked about the $153,000, the total payment of $158,000, we talked about how we're looking at having that come out of the vehicle replacement program this year because we have the extra money in escrow, and then we have the 10-year lease, we've also mentioned, here's just the documentation on the costs, again, the total payments are right around $120,000. Any questions on anything in capital? All right, moving on to water. Do water last? Sure, sure, sure. All right, let's jump to tab 13 of motor fuel tax fund. So similar to the capital projects fund, the first page here is revenues, and as you can see, we've got about a total of $767,000 coming in as revenues. The next page shows, is, is very similar to what we just looked at for capital projects, it shows the budget amounts, the carryover, and the new, the new items. You'll see there's lots in the carryover column. One piece of this is that for several of these projects, we are, we end up waiting on the state to bill us, and sometimes the state is a little slower in billing us than we would anticipate, and so we begin budgeting for it and planning for it, and saying, we realize we've got this money, you know, sitting in our bank for these motor fuel tax, sitting in this fund, but we don't want to use it, we want to realize that this really is spoken for, for when the state does bill us. And so several of these items you'll see in here are items that were repeated the last several years and will be until we get the bill from the state.
What if we just told the state, forget about what they owe us, and we won't pay them this?
Hmm, that could work.
Interesting idea.
Yeah.
Sounds good to me.
I don't think so.
Yep.
We'll pay you when you pay us.
That's right, that's right. So you can see here, we're looking at the Pasquenelli, it's set up as in prior years into two different pieces, there's the professional services, which is the engineering portion, and then there's the street improvements as well. So you'll see several of them reflected in both places, you'll see some that are just under-engineering, because we're not at the point of the construction on them yet, but you'll see work on Pasquenelli and Ogden, the 20, to the 2008 C-Max sidewalk is an example of ones that we're waiting for things to get finalized with the state. Got some, the MFT resurfacing is what we talked about for our, it's our road resurfacing program, you'll see under street improvements, we've got $405,000 from MFT resurfacing that we had initially budgeted to do last year, last year we had one from the year before that as well, we've kind of shifted the time period of when we do the motor fuel resurfacing project, based on, you know, budget time schedules and things, so we've shifted to the dates that we do them, which ended up pushing, so we now have two in this fiscal year, and then we should be back- And then we should be back on the schedule of just having one in the fiscal year at a time. But we, we're looking at 405,000 carried over from last year's project that was identified, and then another 500,000 in this year's project. And obviously, those would be adjusted, and we'd be looking at those if we do go with the bond. You know, when we are doing the $9 million worth of resurfacing, we'd be looking at this and reconsidering sort of the amounts that we're doing in these. Any questions on any of the projects in here? All right. The next fund is the IMRF Social Security Fund. And this, again, is not, doesn't have a lot of pieces to it. It's basically the revenue that we get in is the property tax. And so we levy a property tax to cover the village payments for the, the IMRF payments for the IMRF pension, as well as the FICA, Medicare, Social Security payroll tax payments that we have. And then, so the only revenue in here is, are those property taxes. The only expenses in here are the expenses that we calculate we need for our payroll That pretty much covers the items besides water that we initially done. Let me check the agenda real quick. So we've kind of, it looks like we've hit all the major funds. Tab 15, as you're aware, is just sort of an appendix. It's got some different acronyms, some, you know, terms that could be helpful, some different categories of accounts and those kind of things. But I think we've hit the major funds besides water. We could start looking at water at this point under tab 12. Back to tab 12. We've got, the first page is one that you saw at the last budget workshop. It's just a duplicate of the page that's under the revenue trends. We put it here so you could see along with water, the different pieces of the revenue. So as your, this would come as no surprise, the largest portion of the water revenue is water sales. We've broken out and separated from that the amount that we expect to get in on the infrastructure fees through the water sales. So you can see that's about 23 percent of our total revenues. You'll notice on the chart, and I mentioned it last time, but I'll just highlight it again this time, the reason that the 2012 budget was so high while the actual was so low was when we were initially preparing the budget. We knew about the rate increase that was coming up. We knew about the infrastructure fee that we were planning to implement. And we initially thought that the rate fee was going to be coming at the beginning of the year. We were lucky enough that it didn't come until midway through the year. And so that's why our revenues are much less than was initially projected. So it's because the rate increase didn't come initially, and that's, that's a good thing. For this coming budget year, we looked at the different, we looked at the rates, and then we looked at the time period from when DuPage Water Commission projects the rates will go up. And that's how we came up with our total budget for 2013, that, but why 2012 looks so low. All right. The next, the next page or two is the detail of the breakdown of those revenues. You know, as we talked about, we covered the major pieces of it, but then you can see all the individual breakdown of the other pieces that were sort of summarized in the pie chart. All right. The next page is, the red page is again, the level one and two cuts that were adopted by water. These are the things that, you know, they ended up reducing from the budget. And then the next page are some items that they would like to, they would like to keep in the budget. It's kind of, again, you know, we wanted to identify them as potential things, but they're fairly high priorities. But they're things that, you know, we could look at, at reducing or cutting. The next page is a budget variance report, which goes through the different pieces of the different accounts. And again, this, the items listed on here are for the accounts where it changed by at least $1,000 and at least 10 percent of the account. So you can see they're looking, they're requesting two seasonal employees. Professional services went up significantly because we're looking at some design, engineering design services for stormwater. And it says storm sewer, and it should not, it's water main design. I apologize for that. I was thinking of storm sewer, apparently. So it's for water main design for Grant Street and Adam Street. Got garage door maintenance under building services. The disposal expense increased a little bit because of some EPA requirements. We talked about the water purchase, you know, the water rate increase, and that's why the water purchase amount is going up. We had some general increases in maintenance supplies. Other, the water main improvements for Grant Street and Adam Street, this time I realized there were water mains. As we have the last couple of years, we've put in 100,000 for land purchase, sort of if, if land becomes available and it ends up working out, we've got it there in the budget. The building purchases improvements went down this year because last year it included the roof replacement and some additional building improvements, which are not in this year. The meter system improvement saw significant increases. You were, as you're aware, when we looked at the infrastructure needs, that presentation that Mike Ramsey had prepared, one of the main things we need, we looked at were meter system and upgrading the meters. And so we're looking at a significant increase in that account this year to try to catch up with that meter replacement program. Under automotive equipment, they are looking at replacing the meter truck, which is about up for replacement. And then they're proposing getting, you know, replacing the truck and then getting a different vehicle to actually do the meter reads, a vehicle that'd be a little bit more fuel efficient, something that could, you know, since it's driving around all the time, it would make sense to have a more fuel efficient vehicle. So that request is in their budget as well. Other equipment's down because last year it included some other items. The credit card service fees we had mentioned previously, the last workshop, that, these are fees for credit card processing. So the, we are charged because we allow our residents and customers to pay with credit cards. We looked at it and realized that about 75 percent of the payments that were made are people paying their water bills. And so it makes sense to charge a portion of that, or 75 percent of that, to the water fund. So that is there. Debt principal is down from what was in the budget last year. Last year was sort of an estimate. We didn't have the final figures on what we'd need to be paying for our debt for the EPA. And that, that debt was to do some water main work, and it was a 0 percent interest loan from the state. So that's why there's only, it's only going to be seen in debt principal. You won't see anything in debt interest because there is none. And then, as we talked about, the payment in lieu of taxes is there. The next page is similar to what we saw for capital projects and motor fuel tax. We've got the budgeted amount, the carryover. And then in this one, there's an additional column labeled infrastructure. Because we have adopted that infrastructure fee, the, which we estimate brings in about 1.6 million, we wanted to kind of identify the revenues coming in for that, as well as the expenses going out for that. And so you'll see again, the new operating, which is what we want to make sure our revenue is covered. If you look down to the very end, you'll see we've got a budgeted surplus of about one point, or, excuse me, a budget deficit of about 1.5 million. And you'll see some, 461,000 of that's due to carryovers. And then another large piece of it is due to infrastructure. So we're beginning to implement the infrastructure fee. And then there's also several infrastructure programs and projects that are included in this budget right now as it stands. So we're looking currently at reducing the cash balance in the water fund significantly in, you know, saying, "Over the next couple of years, we're, we're going to be bringing in these infrastructure fees. We hope to be able to build back up these cash reserves." And then you can see the new operating has a deficit of 71,000 right now. Some of the projects that are there under, under infrastructure is, you'll notice on the pages to the left, under the water main improvements, the Grant and Adam Street that we talked about. And that's, those are 600,000 apiece. The meter system improvements are about 1.1 million right there. So those are some of the items that are contributing to the deficit this year. As we start getting, we want to start aggressively, looking at replacing some water mains and the meters. And if that's the direction that we want to go, we're going to be taking a drop in our cash balance in the water fund, at least for right now. So that's one of the reasons that we mentioned, a possibility of, you know, either this year or a future year, we could look at doing a bond for, for water projects and then using some of the infrastructure maintenance fee to pay off some of those bond costs. That would be another option. So I mean, I guess there's sort of the three options for the infrastructures. You know, you can try to, in each year, use no more than the amount you get in that year. You can say, "We're going to do a little bit more upfront, hit the fund balance and then replenish it." Or you could look at some sort of bond. Right now, what we've got proposed in the budget is the kind of reducing cash balance for now and hoping that it will be replenished kind of in the future with that infrastructure Any questions about the water fund or any of the items in the water fund? Any questions? All? Any other things to consider?
It's amazing, the last four or five budgets have been so tough. And as tough as they are each year, in some ways, they get easier just because of all of you guys, all of the department heads. You just do such a phenomenal job. I mean, there's just nothing at this point, it's just, you guys are great. Great job.
Not much there.
Jeez. Bear our necessities. So, kudos.
Well, and we all would like to acknowledge too, there is some recovery.
A little bit.
You know, we don't want to get too over optimistic, but are starting to see some signs.
Their flash index is starting, it has been going up, and that's what's really encouraging. Real estate is still lagging. I noted on the way in, I saw some signs. I haven't seen these in a while where people are selling houses for tear downs.
Really?
In my neighborhood over where the store is, there's four that have been built up in a one and a half block area.
Wow, that's very encouraging.
And selling, not just...
That's encouraging.
Putting them up for sale. You know, they put the sign up, and within a couple of months, they're sold. So they're starting to buy the properties and knock them down. So there's something happening.
Good.
Spencer, I appreciate you're running the, what I asked for with the budget versus act, you know, the, the reconciliation sheets. And I see the totals coming out are, you know, significant. It's interesting to see that what was spent on most things was under budget, yet budgeted for next year is over what was originally budgeted for this year. So, you know, we can keep our fingers crossed that likewise, it'll come under again. But what I have to do, I think, is, do we have a total on budget versus actual? I see a total for the departments, but I'm just wondering if you ran a total on the entire budget versus actual.
I have not. We can do that?
Okay. I'm just curious, because like, police really knuckled down, and they were budgeted last year for six point, almost 6.3 million. Actual spends, expense was 4.6. So that's a big savings, and they're budgeted for next year at 6.5. And I know there's things that they did without that have to be spent and all that. But I'd like to see what the total is, you know, for entire budget versus your reconciliation.
If you go back historically, look at our audits, you'll see the last several years, all the departments have done a great job about managing expenses.
It's phenomenal.
You know, try to be conservative, overestimate our expenses.
Yep. Because the audit, I know it's on the audit, but I was going to put it in with my budget, you know, with the reconciliation.
Yeah, we can have that for Thursday, I'm sure.
Sure. Yeah, we can do that.
Appreciate it.
The other thing I did want to mention is that last year when we did this, because we were, we had passed the end of the fiscal year, we were, we were able to capture all of the revenue, excuse me, all the expenditures in the whole fiscal year. This year, we're only looking at, you know, we stopped at March, and so there's some things that have not been purchased yet. There's some things, especially utility costs will, you know, they're a couple of months behind, so we may have two or three months' worth of some utility costs. We've got, you know, two or three months' worth of some contractual services that are built back a little bit. So it's, we, we definitely have been doing a good job with controlling expenditures. Departments have been doing a great job staying under budget. When the audit comes, it probably, well, I mean, it certainly won't be as under budget as it appears to be right now because we've got, you know, a few months' worth of expenditures left to come through. But just to clarify that, but we, we have been doing a great job at watching expenditures, and we're very grateful for the departments and their diligence with that.
I guess we would anticipate, as long as we continue to prepare this budget for the board, that we would typically try to give it to you, and it'll, it'll be in an incomplete state unless we end up waiting beyond the fiscal year.
Right. We don't want to do that.
Prefer not to do that.
We don't want to do that again. Not good.
All right. Anything else? Let entertain on the motion to adjourn.
So move Seneca.
Second stand.
Wow.
Wow. It's record.
That's right.
Yay.
Call.
Trustee Seneca?
Yes.
Trustee Clevenow?
Yes.
Trustee Emery?
Yes. It loads you with a stick.
Still shocked.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
All right, this meeting is now adjourned.
Y'all went to sleep.